Good evening, everyone. See if I can, nope, nope, I'm just gonna kinda bend over a little. Good evening, everyone, and we're gonna open the second session of the town meeting at 7:01. My name's Greg M. I was elected deputy moderator yesterday, and I'll just represent to the meeting that before the meeting, I signed an oath that said that I'll uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state of Maine and fulfill my duties as moderator of this town meeting to the best of my abilities in accordance with the law. I'll also represent that the ballot clerks were sworn in yesterday, and they're still under oath to help with any of the counting if we need to this evening. Let's see, what else? My, let's see, next door of business is to set the rules of procedure. I'm gonna use the main moderators manual, which is the procedures that are generally used, almost universally by, for all town meetings and school budget meetings. Any objection to using the main moderators manual? Okay, we'll go with that. Next, by law, a person who's not registered to vote in the town is not permitted to speak at the meeting without consent of two-thirds of the voters here. There are a couple staff members or town employees, Andrew Stevenson, who's the fire chief, and Keith Trefeven, who's the town manager, who are not registered voters, but they may be needed to address the meeting just to provide information, not to speak for or against anything, but to provide information. So I'm gonna ask for the general consent of the meeting to allow these people to speak, just to answer questions and provide information. Any objection? Okay. See, so I'm not gonna dwell too much on procedures, but I'll go over it briefly for anybody who's not familiar with town meeting procedures. The business of the meeting is stated in the warrant for this, articles three through, I think, forty-seven. I'll take up each article in turn. I'll read the article. I'll look for a motion and a second. Once we have those, I'll open the floor up for discussion. So are we recording this, Keith? Do they need to be on the microphone to be heard?
Yes, we're recording. Plus, the acoustics can be a challenge in here from time to time. There's a mic down at the end on that table, and then there's one behind everybody. That can be used freely. It can be moving around.
So except for simple motions, if you wanna speak, please use either of the microphones. When I recognize you, state your name. If you're not a registered voter, let me know, and we'll get consent of the meeting for you to speak. We keep all the remarks relevant to the motion that's on the floor. Let's keep our comments to maybe under three minutes. I think it'll be reasonable. Again, I'm gonna hold off on lots of other procedure, but I will arm you with one procedural tool. That is, at some town meetings, sometimes discussion goes on for a while on something, and maybe you think you've heard enough about it. I don't have authority to stop discussion and call for a vote, but the voters do, you do. The motion, you can make the motion to call the question, or there are no magic words. You can just say, can we stop talking about this and vote? That'll work. That's an extraordinary motion. It requires a two-thirds vote to do that, but just keep that in mind in case it's needed. Those of you who registered voters should have checked in with the clerk and gotten a beige card. That's, most of our voting's gonna be by show of cards. Let's see, once we vote on an article, I'll just move on to declare the results and move on to the next. I'm just gonna launch into the article now. If I can find it. Okay. So we're starting with Article Three. Again, I'm gonna read this now. So, "Shall the town vote to adopt an ordinance entitled, Amendment to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance, Current Section 2.4, Lots Split by District Boundaries?" "The text of the proposed revision is presented in Exhibit A." So is there a motion for Article Three? Okay, so the motion is to, I'll take that as a motion to adopt Article Three as written. Is there any discussion on Article Three? Take an extra beat here. Okay, so no discussion. We're gonna vote on Article Three, again, by show of cards. So all those in favor of approving Article Three as written? Thank you, opposed? Okay, Article Three passes as written.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to move Article Eleven ahead of Article Four.
Is there a second? Okay, so the motion is to take Article out of order, to move, to consider Article Eleven right now before Article Four. Again, that requires a two-thirds vote. So any discussion on that motion to take up Eleven next? Okay, all those in favor of taking up Article Eleven next? Thank you, opposed? Okay, that's two-thirds, so we're gonna take up Article Eleven. Shall the town vote to adopt an ordinance entitled Amendment to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance, Current Section 9.3.37, Seasonal Resorts? "The text of the proposed revision is presented as Exhibit H." Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, Article Eleven's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on Article Eleven? Yes, sir. Do you mind stating your name, please?
Yeah, my name is Richard Gannon. I'm the chairman of the planning board. The planning board had a meeting. We split evenly, three-three, on whether to accept this motion. We sent it to the selectmen with a recommendation that it not be forwarded. But this was a citizen petition, so it's on the ballot. I'm opposed to it. We've had three, this would be the third time we have changed the ordinance related to seasonal cottages in terms of the amount of time that they are allowed to be there. When we started off, it was from May to October. It then went to November. It then went to December. We're now being asked to go back the other way. I think it's a bad idea. I don't like institutionalized creep in terms of getting things accomplished. So, as I said, the planning board was split evenly on it. I'm just opposed to it.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is George Rost. I need a permission to speak.
Okay.
I'm a non-voter.
Okay, so again, two-thirds vote to allow this gentleman to address the meeting on this motion. All those in favor of allowing him to speak? Thank you, opposed? Laura, sure?
Hi, thanks. I'm George Rostelaris. I live at Ninety-Six Patriot Way in the cottages. And that really wasn't accurate. We haven't, this is our new homeowners association. We're all new. Owners we've taken over this year for a new board, and this was, this came from the owners for just a thirty-day extension of our season. This has nothing to, like, we had nothing to do with the three times before. I think the three times before were maybe back in the early two thousands. I don't know, two thousand, two thousand and ten, eleven? That was a developer. We're not the developer. We're the owners, just like everybody else. We're owners like you are, and we pay taxes, and we enjoy being in Arundel. We just wanted to have a little more time. And that's really, that's really, you know, we went around and we got signatures from businesses who supported us in the area, because it's good for them. You know, we come back and we go to the places. We buy food. We, you know, we do a lot of things in Arundel, and I think we're good for the town. And obviously, definitely, we're good for the town. We put in a lot of, I mean, we pay high taxes, and it's really been a benefit to Arundel, because we don't use any of the surfaces in Arundel. I hope everybody understands. The only thing we could possibly use is public safety, and that's just everybody. So we don't, you know, we don't have children in the schools. We don't have snow removal. We don't have garbage removal. We don't have any of that. We take care of that ourselves. We're self-sufficient. So I just wanted to ask consideration to, you know, let us stay in our homes one month longer. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll recognize the gentleman in the red shirt. I think you were waiting before him, so.
My name's Gordon Rugaber. I'm also a resident of Cape Arundel. And unlike many of the residents, that's my permanent residence. I live here eight months out of the year, and some of the board members know I was here last fall. You know, we had an eighteen percent tax increase for my little eleven-hundred-square-foot cottage. I'm paying fifty-four hundred dollars a year on taxes. So I think the Cape Arundel residents are paying more than their fair share of taxes. And as Mr. Justelar said, you know, we do a lot for the community, and I personally volunteer at different places. I saw that year-long at Bedford High School. And, yeah, I don't understand the other gentleman's opposition. Seems like a good thing for the town and town businesses, so I sure hope it passes.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Skip Bell, a resident of the state of Maine, resident of Arundel. My wife and I have grown to just value this community every passing year that we live here. For Batson Lane in the Cape Arundel Cottage Reserve, but this is our home. This is our place. Now, we do have to spend for rent to vacate, but we don't mind going south for a little bit in the winter. It would be great to feel valued and a part of this community where we purchase product, we purchase gasoline, we enjoy restaurants, we move and act in the community, and of course, pay our property taxes. I don't think the reasoning that it is a change is a valid one to set aside the reality that we are together as residents here in Maine and the state of Arundel. So I very much value that sense of openness to April One. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
My name is Diane Robbins-Mokas, and I'm a resident of Arundel. I've lived in this town now for forty-three years. I can shed some light on what's transpired, because I sat on the original Comprehensive Planning Committee that spent a year and a half meeting with the planning board to develop the rules, regulations, and timeframes for the seasonal cottages. It was not an easy process. The seasonal cottage resort is, was actually not even allowed in that area. We developed a new zone, a new process, a new arrangement, a new, an agreement with the person who first brought the project forward. Now, I understand you have homes there. I understand how you feel. This is not personal for me. This is a matter of, there was an agreement. The agreement, I believe originally, they were only supposed to be there, I think, until November, the end of November, the end of October, and then it got moved and moved. The problem with that is that it does appear to be a creep. The original agreement was that it only be open, I believe it was May to October, because it's a seasonal resort. It is not supposed, it was not meant to be a full-time community. It was not meant to have children, which I understand you don't have any, because I don't think you meet the qualifications, because you're not there long enough. But it's getting close, because now you're there till April, and a lot of schools get out in May. So it's a concern. Now, in regards to taxes, the tax base in town is rated and given to us dependent on the value of our property. And believe me, I pay my fair share of taxes. So it's, seasonal cottages, I don't believe, is taxed any different than anyone else in town. We all have to pay a piece of whatever it is that has to get paid, and eighty percent of it goes to the school. But I wanted you to understand that this isn't personal. It's because the original agreement was that it was only seasonal, and it was only open until October. Currently, I believe you're open until March? December thirty-first, and now we're going to April? So that's... All right. All right, so this has creeped. So you went November, December, January, February, March? Or we're going through March. So we've got, we've added four months. Now we're going to month five. So that's my concern, and I hope you understand why some of us are reluctant.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Ryan Lawler. I'm not a registered voter.
Okay, so we're just gonna take a vote to see if we'll allow the gentleman to speak. All those in favor? Thank you, opposed?
I just wanted to quickly just address the creep situation. Like, I totally understand how it comes across as creep. Yes, it has changed over the years, but I'm a member of the HOA board, and we're consulted with other homeowners, and there really isn't a desire to go any further than April. You know, that people don't wanna be having to spend, you know, more money on HOA fees for March. You know, we'd have to do way more applying for the driveways. There just isn't a demand for it. And then we haven't reached that point that we're affecting anything else in the town or the town's residents. It's just the month of April. It doesn't change anything with the school system, taxes. It's just really a matter of just, people wanna come back and be able to use that extra month. And you know what? If it's down the line, it ends up being to the point that it is crossing that barrier, then it can be addressed then. But at this point, really just looking for a month of April, which is the beginning of spring, and that's really all that the homeowners are asking for. So I just wanted to address that, understand that it seems like creep, but this is really all they're looking for. So.
Okay, thanks. Yes.
My name is Chip Bassett. I live on River Road in Arundel. I was on the planning board from two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen, which was after the seasonal cottages had been approved, but as it was being implemented in the initial build-out. The concept that was pitched to the town and voted on a town meeting was seasonal cottages, six months from May through October. Now, if this is approved, it would be nine months, which is a fairly long season. I'm sure that the homeowners in the cottages are not aware that the town only gains twenty-five percent of the assessed value that has been added when your homes were built. But that is significant, and I can tell you that in the three years I was on the planning board, the developer was, if six months went by without the developer asking for more changes to the plan and more concessions, then I began to worry what was going to come next. And so I can understand the homeowner's point of view. But, and one other thing I will add is that the town has made a whole series of concessions without getting anything of substance from the cottages, from the developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm a non-resident, so I'll have to be approved.
So can we let her speak?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So I just wanna, I wanna flip the tone a little. I'm a resident of the Cape Arundel cottages. I live in New Hampshire. I just wanna flip the tone, because I feel like it's starting to be us against you, and I don't want that to be the feeling tonight. We love Arundel. We've already said that. Obviously, we do. You've seen the cottages. It's gorgeous, right? Joe did a wonderful, beautiful job. God rest his soul. And I'm also a business owner, and I've been through a planning board and a zoning board and trying to get things approved, and I'm sure Joe did everything he could and promised his firstborn child to get this community going. We are being held responsible a little bit for that, but I think there has to be some awareness that we're just the consumers there. What April means to us is an extra month. I do have to talk about the tax component. So when we purchased, our taxes were something, and then we were reassessed before the rest of the town was. That felt like a little bit of a hit for us. We were also supposed to get septic down. And listen, we have this, we have this leach field that is like fourteen football fields. That's our reality now. We accept that. But I think when we started to talk about, let's see if we could get April, we also took that into consideration. We're not getting septic. We're gonna live with this entire huge, huge field that actually smells sometimes when you're at the pool. But the point I wanna make is, we feel a part of this community. I mean, that gas station down there, I mean, I am there all the time. Don't tell my husband, but it's true. And so we love it here. We only wanna bring value to the town. I mean, we essentially give you a million dollars to do whatever you want with. Whether you get twenty-five percent of it, you're certainly getting something. And so put it into your schools. Put it here, put it there. So I just wanna change the tone. We feel like we're part of your community. We don't wanna feel like we're going against you tonight.
Thank you. I'm gonna recognize Mr. Dubois.
Just real quickly, I wanna talk a little bit about the tax situation. These folks are not taxed like you folks, like the regular homeowners are. It's a business. They're taxed for the infrastructure. They're taxed a lot more than an average homeowner. They're taxed for the septic system. They're taxed for the extra buildings that are there, the swimming pools, what have you. So to compare them to our regular taxes is not right. They pay a tremendous amount, a lot more taxes, and what they bring into the town of Arundel is huge and very beneficial. And adding an extra month, in my eyes, is the wrong thing, is the correct thing to do for these folks. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Simone Bussino. I used to be the tax collector, retired. And I agree with Dan. I think the seasonal cottages have brought a lot of additional value and a lot of additional resources to the town, as far as with the TIF district. And as far as community support, I only see it as an increase in, like, I think we've seen, like, with the little miniature golf place coming up, different things coming up around Route One. And just being part of the historical society, I think a lot of people from the cottages have supported the Arundel Conservation Trust, the Arundel Historical Society. We see a lot of these people coming to Heritage Day, to the Bean Suppers, to things like that, that are community events. And, you know, and I don't think adding an extra month is not gonna impact our school. It's not gonna impact anything else in the town, and I think they're bringing a lot of business to the area, and I think it's, they're very good for Arundel as far as, you know, our development and everything else. So it would have been, we initially, when this was first proposed, it was going to be first, I think, like, some kind of a racetrack, and then the next thing you know, it was gonna be like a campground or something. So I think the value that the seasonal cottages has brought has really, really helped the town, and I support the extra month for these people.
Thank you, that's it. So is there, so he's moved the question. Is there a second? Okay, so again, this requires a two-thirds vote to stop talking about this and vote. All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, so we're gonna vote on this, so again, by show of cards. All those in favor of approving Article Eleven as written? Thank you, opposed? Okay, so Article Eleven passes as written. Okay, Article Four. Shall the town vote to adopt an ordinance entitled Amendment to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance, Current Section Three, Definitions Flood Plane Net Development Density, Seasonal Cottage, Seasonal Resort? "The text of the revision is presented in Exhibit B." Is there a motion for Article Four? Thank you. Any discussion on Article Four? Yes.
Diane Robbins, Arundel. I did go to the meeting on this. Under the definitions under existing manufactured home park subdivision, it talks about, you know, a manufactured home park or subdivision that was recorded in the deed registry prior to the adoption date of the community's first floodplain management regulations, but it doesn't tell you what the date is. And as a town, as we get older and older, older, it's gonna be harder and harder to try to put that date in there. And I believe I had asked them to add that date to this paragraph so that it would be recorded.
I'm sorry, to add the date, you mean to change to the ordinance itself or this article?
You can't, I understand you can't add the date, because that would be a substantive change.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, at some point, we should go back and add that date so that it stays with this ordinance, so that we don't end up having to go back to research, you know, fifty years from now.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion on Article Four? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna vote. All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, those were half-hearted yeses, but Article Four passes as written. Article Five, Shall the Town Vote to Adopt an Ordinance Entitled Amendment to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance, Current Section 4.9, Disability Permit? "The text of the proposed revision is presented in Exhibit C." Is there a motion? Okay, discussion on Article Five? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, Article Five passes as written. Article Six. Shall the town vote to adopt an ordinance entitled Amendment to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance, Current Section 5.1, Estate Lots? "The text of the proposed revision is presented in Exhibit D." Is there a motion? Thanks. Any discussion on Article Six? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, Article Six passes as written. Article Seven, Shall the Town Vote to Repeal Section 5.8 Within the Land Use Ordinance Flood Plane Management and Replace This Section With a Stand-Alone Ordinance Entitled Flood Plane Management Ordinance for the Town of Arundel? That's it. Is there a second? Discussion on Article Seven? Okay, oh, yes, sir.
Chip Bassett, I understand that the purpose of this is to conform with state statutes. All right, that's the rationale for it. However, it appears to defer to maps provided by FEMA, which I have looked at, or at least the examples that we were given, and have very little detail to them. Typically, the land use ordinance provides that conditions on the ground override any maps that someone has drawn. My impression of the way this is written is that the maps rule unless the landowner goes to the Board of Appeals and can prove that the map is incorrect. I think that is a land management version of guilty until proven innocent. And if I can be corrected, that's great, if I'm misreading it, but I don't think I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Looking to address that, or? Any other discussion? Oh, sorry.
James Lowry, a resident of Arundel. Just to clarify, there are ways and avenues for a landowner to request a letter of map amendment or a letter of map revision through FEMA in order to change the maps. It's not necessarily through the Board of Appeals.
Thanks.
From my point of view, that makes it significantly worse if you have to go to the federal government to get an amendment rather than working through the local Board of Appeals.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
One of the reasons that we have this is that we were told by the former town planner, we don't have a choice. If we don't pass it, the state's gonna do it for us.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article Seven? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of Article Seven? Thank you, opposed? Thank you. Article Seven passes as written. Article Eight, Shall the Town Vote to Adopt an Ordinance Entitled Amendment to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance, Current Section 5.12.2, Parking Lot, Driveway Surface? "The text of the proposed revision is presented in Exhibit E." Okay, any discussion on Article Eight? All right, all those in favor of Article Eight? Thank you, opposed? Okay, Article Eight passes as written. Okay, Article eight passes as written. Article nine. Shall the town vote to adopt an ordinance entitled Amendment to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance Current Sections Nine Conditional Use and Section Ten? Site plan review. Text of the proposed revision is presented in Exhibit F. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on Article nine? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Yeah, Article nine passes as written. Article ten, shall the town vote to adopt an ordinance entitled Amendment to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance Current Section Nine Point Three Point Twenty Two? Mobile food trucks and trailers. Text of the proposed revision is presented in Exhibit G. Any discussion on Article ten? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? The Article ten passes as written. Article eleven, we've done. Article twelve. Shall the town vote to adopt an ordinance entitled Amendment to the Arundel Food Truck Ordinance Current Section Roman Two? Definitions intersection, section ten. Performance standards, item E. Section eleven, revocation of license, item D. The text of the proposed revision is presented in Exhibit I. Clearly. Any discussion on Article twelve? Okay, all those in favor of Article twelve? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. Uh, Article twelve passes as written as opposed to as read. Article thirteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred twenty thousand nine hundred forty-two dollars for the general government account? The school board recommends yes, and the budget board recommends yes. What did I say? I did this last year. I did this last year. I I I'm coming off of thirteen school budget meetings, so I beg you to forgive us. Um, okay, select board and budget board both recommend yes. Is there a, uh, a motion? All right, let's try to keep this on the rails. Any discussion on Article thirteen? Yes. Anybody prepared to answer that? The effect on the mill rate.
Are you looking for an overall, um, or just a specific one? If all the ball budget passes, uh, we're looking at, um, right now, we're projecting another roughly twenty million dollars of new uh, property value within the community, which, uh, right now, as I've looked at, um, what has been passed by the school board of six point two million to us. We have a county budget of around almost three hundred thousand dollars. And then this budget, after we take the, um, projected revenue out, will be about three million dollars. So, um, I'm looking at somewhere between, um, fifteen, uh, to twenty cent difference in your tax rate as a result of everything that would get approved.
But that also all depends on what we put in for out of out of the the fund.
Right, one of the articles here will be requesting, one of the articles here will be requesting that you set aside five hundred thousand dollars out of our fund balance for use by the Board of Selectmen when they set the tax rate in probably the end of August, the first of September. They'll be meeting once we have all those values and set that rate.
Anything else on Article thirteen? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Okay, Article thirteen passes as written. Article fourteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million fifty-eight thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars for the Town Hall Administration Account? The Select Board recommends yes. The Budget Board recommends yes.
Second.
Any discussion on Article fourteen? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? The Article fourteen passes as written. Article fifteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million three hundred twelve thousand four hundred eleven dollars for the operations of the Arundel Fire Rescue Service Account? Select Board recommends yes. Budget Board recommends yes.
Second.
Any discussion on Article fifteen? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Article fifteen passes as written. Article sixteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seventy thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars for the civil services account? The Select Board and Budget Board both recommend yes. Any discussion on Article sixteen? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Article sixteen passes as written. Article seventeen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million fifty-one thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars for the Public Works Department account? The school board, this, uh, select board and budget board recommend yes. I'll do this all night. Okay, any discussion on Article seventeen? Yes.
Thank you.
I missed that, but any, I mean. Okay, I get it. Um, any other discussion on seventeen? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Okay, Article seventeen passes as written. Article eighteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred thirty-five thousand four hundred thirty dollars for the Town Transfer Recycling Account? Select Board recommends yes. Budget Board recommends yes. Any discussion on eighteen? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Article eighteen passes as written. Article nineteen. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thirteen thousand six hundred forty-four dollars for the General Assistance Account? Select Board recommends yes. Budget Board recommends yes. Any discussion on nineteen? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Okay, Article nineteen passes as written. Article twenty. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred seventy-one thousand one hundred forty dollars for the Recreation Account? Select Board and Budget Board both recommend yes. Any discussion on Article twenty? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Okay, Article twenty passes as written. Article twenty-one, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for police protection? Funding covers two police, uh, two patrol officers for a total of eighty hours per week. Select Board and Budget Board recommend yes. Any discussion on Article twenty-one? Yes.
Is there some reason why, when they gave us the stats for the police department, that we only got a month?
Does anybody care?
When you look at page thirty, I believe it's thirty-six, thirty-five?
Yes, I I believe all that is just one month of information that they provided. They didn't give us a total a total amount. Uh, every month, they provide us a report uh, that's given to the, uh, Board of Selectmen. And I think what happened here is that that report got transferred to the town report. Um, in the future, it's our plan, and I gotta, we're gonna have to do some more research because there's a lot of information within that that may be sensitive to individuals who get picked up for burglary or, uh, criminal speed or those types of things that, uh, we may not want to divulge that information public. But that information is available at this point.
All right, number one, it might be available to you, but it's not available to us. This deviates from what we normally get, which is a, which is what they did over the last year. This is a lot of money. For a couple of deputies that I've heard several rumors. Were not just servicing us, but because York County Sheriff was short, they were also servicing that. So I brought this up before at another town meeting where we didn't have the numbers for the year in the Sheriff's Department. As I have today, because I don't see them represented. If we're going to contract with them, they should be giving us what they did over the year, like they normally do. And there should be a representative here if we have questions.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article twenty-one? Is all set? Okay. Okay, all those in favor of Article twenty-one? Thank you. Opposed? Okay, Article twenty-one passes as written. Article twenty-two, shall the voters authorize the Board of Selectmen upon majority vote of the full Board of Selectmen to exceed by no more than five percent annually the amount authorized for each account approved in Articles thirteen through twenty-one above? So long as the amount spent for the sum total of those articles does not exceed the total appropriation approved for those articles. Remotion? Any discussion on Article twenty-two? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Okay, Article twenty-two passes as written. Article twenty-three, shall the town vote to expend the sum of one hundred thousand dollars from the municipal fund balance to perform an update of real estate property values in Arundel? Select Board and Budget Board recommend yes. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Chip Bassett, I have a question. Uh, it actually relates to Article twenty-three, twenty-four, and I believe thirty-four. Yes, thirty-four. Uh, it's a total of seven hundred thousand dollars being used from the town's fund balance, uh, which is in in it it it's the municipal accounting version of equity. Um, and I wanted to ask the Board of Selectmen i- if there is a policy in place for how the town applies, uh, money in the fund balance. I know that the, uh, use of money, uh, to to reduce the tax rate has gone on for at least the past couple of years, but I haven't seen anything, uh, in terms of how that dollar amount is determined. How how long we'll be able to continue doing it if if that fund balance gets drawn down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody care to address that question?
Uh, yes, we there, the Board of Selectmen do have a fund balance policy. Um, I can make it available for folks, uh, to take a look at if they so desire. But essentially, it requires that the board set aside at least twenty percent of their fund balance in order to uh, cover any un- unanticipated expenses. Right now, our fund balance has, uh, roughly five point two million i- in the balance. Twenty percent that we would have to set aside based on our overall budgets that would be approved is about two and a half million, two point five to two point six. So we're well within, uh, the ability to spend uh, the funds that we have in there that we've earmarked for fund balance, uh, use this evening, so. Um, but it's there. We have it available.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yes, Emory Rounds from, uh, Arundel, I'm a resident. I'm a simple man. I'm a cranky old man. Um, but I have only certain level of intelligence. I wonder if somebody could explain to me what Article twenty-three really means. Uh, it seems to me that, you know, we want to do this. Fairness is in the eye of the beholder. Are we, uh, where's the ying, where's the yang? If we're going to look at property values, what are we talking about? Tax rate? What's the vision here? Somebody who bought a house twenty years ago that was bought for two hundred thousand dollars? Maybe by a quirk of economy, it's now worth six hundred thousand dollars? That, okay, I don't know what the assessment's going to be. I don't know what the rate's going to be. But we might be voting people out of their homes if we're not careful. So if somebody could explain to me in English what this means.
I'll I'll give it a stab. What what we're trying to accomplish with the statistical update is to, well, let me back up. Every year, the State of Maine comes in and does a, uh, sales assessment of properties within Arundel. That sales assessment is used to set a sale, a a, um, ratio of value for the community. Um, right now, our overall ratio for value is around seventy-one, seventy-two percent per their, um, review that they do. And what they do essentially is come in, they look at the sales, they take take money out of the sales, um, and and match it to what our assessment is, and then they come up with a ratio. So right now, uh, the condominiums that, uh, we we spoke about earlier are about seventy-seven percent. Uh, give or take a few percentage one way or the other. The, um, our our real estate home values, uh, are running about sixty-two percent. So there's a disparity, uh, just, uh, within values at this point within the community. So what the, uh, statistical update will do was that a company will come in, look at all the, um, properties within the community. Um, update the formulas that we have in our vision appraisal system, and then come up with new values to your property. Um, what that value does is not necessarily what the tax rate will be, uh, moving forward. Because the taxes that we collect are approved with you voters this evening as to the money that we get to spend. So in essence, if I take, um, if we get back to, say, a hundred percent valuation, we anticipate that is, uh, that seventeen dollar and fifteen cent tax rate that we now are accustomed to is probably going to be closer to half of that. So your new value will be there. So typically, right now, if you have a two hundred fifty thousand dollar home in town and we went to a hundred percent valuation, it'd be, it'd probably be somewhere around three hundred and thirty-five thousand. And then we would take that new tax rate, set it to the three thirty-five. Uh, and then the rule of thumb basically is a third of the people's rate goes up, a third goes down, and a third stays the same. So, uh, there's a formula to it. I know I'm 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 a little bit, uh, on the, uh, non-expert side when it comes to discussing it. But, uh, essentially, that's that's what will happen with the values.
Where are the checks and balances? In other words, who has the final word as to this private company making these subjective decisions? And who has the decision as to what the rate will be at the end of the day?
The rate will be established by the Board of Selectmen when they set the tax rate after these town meetings. The tax rate will be set based on whatever new projected value that we will receive from, uh, a company coming in and reviewing this.
Will we? Will we as citizens have the opportunity to review and vote on the tax rate after the assessment is seen?
No, you will not be able to vote on the tax rate. But you will have the opportunity, say, if somebody comes in and takes a look at your property, they will send you a new notice of what your new value will be. And you and you have the ability to come in and speak to those assessors um, and review your, um, your property record card step by step to ensure that what's on the card is accurate, uh, as to what, uh, is being taxed.
So what we're voting on tonight is basically to give a private firm carte blanche to determine our future on real estate.
Not necessarily. They they work for the Board of Selectmen. They come in, they do work, they present that information to us. And what, and their goal is to try to get us back to closer to market value of what real estate now is going within our area.
And I'm not trying to debate with you. I'm simply trying to understand because this is incredibly significant for a lot of us who have lived here a long time.
Right.
And have real estate that has sat at a certain level. And we understand that property has grown, but there's opportunity for a little mischief here if we're not careful. And if we don't have a bulwark between the assessment and the decision-making, if we disagree with it, then we're encumbered with having to go through the appellate process, which is unbelievably onerous and could involve attorneys. So I think everybody has to be a little bit careful here to understand what in fact they're voting on.
Thank you. Yes, Simone.
Just to kind of explain, as far as the tax rate, the board can't set it tonight because what happens is is like by the time, uh, the assessor gets all of the assessments in the fall, then you're passing tonight the budget for next year. So basically, take the values that you have as far as all the school values, the the county values and the town, the budget that we're passing tonight, that all gets put together. And then you also factor in any of the revenues that are coming in from the state and things like that. And so there is a definite formula to figure the tax rate. So basically, you know, what we appropriate tonight is being for this year's budget, and that sets the tax rate. Um, the the values, as far as I'm aware, um, I don't think we've had a a value revaluation since nineteen ninety, which was, I believe.
No, it was two thousand five was the last one. Yep.
Yeah, and I remember if I remember correctly, when we had done, when I first came in in nineteen ninety, we had like a tax rate of like thirty or forty dollars per hundred, per thousand, per hundred thousand. And when we had the revale done, our values went up, but the tax rate went down to, I think it was like And when we had the revale done, our values went up, but the tax rate went down to, I think it was like eleven dollars. So that will equalize itself. So in other words, where once the valuation is done, we're not going to spend more money. You are appropriating the money that we're spending tonight. So once the valuation is done, it's only going to equalize equalize the values. It's not going to adjust. There's not going to be more money put into the budget because of the revaluation. So what we vote on tonight is just what will happen is the tax rate will just equalize itself with the values that are higher for the town. So I don't know if that helps explain it or not, but you know.
The question I have then is by voting on this, are we opening a Pandora's box? In other words, if the vote is no, is the reassessment no longer on the table? Or if the vote is yes, then we've opened that ugly can of worms, to mix my many metaphors.
I I don't I don't I want to direct this to the board, but I don't think we're opening a can of worms, because I think in the long run, it it just equalizes what everybody is paying, because our if if you have you have some homes that are being assessed now at seventy percent and other homes that have been on the books that are probably down to almost fifty percent. So we're not really paying equally. So this will equalize everybody's taxes, basically. It's it's making it more fair, in other words, and you will have some changes as far as, you know, like, like the manager said, usually a third go, you know, a third go up, a third stay the same, and a third go down. So you will have some people who will be actually paying less in taxes than they've been, but it it equalizes the values. Because I'm sure that there's a lot of people out there who probably have a house assessed at two hundred thousand or a hundred and eighty thousand that if you put it on the market today, it would probably be selling for four hundred thousand, you know. So it's just bringing everybody on an equal standing.
Thank you.
Well, and of course, if we tax them too much, they'll have to put their house on the market, because they won't be able to afford taxes. I've only been in government, well, I guess I've retired now, but nearly fifty years, and this one smacks of a slippery slope. So I just caution.
Yeah, I'll recognize you, and then I'll recognize him.
Okay, I number one, I was extremely apprehensive the last time we went through it. I found that the process worked pretty smooth. And Keith, correct me if I'm wrong, so that people understand how the process works. So they assess your property. Many times, they will ask to see the inside of your property. You don't have to let them see the inside. You will get a form saying exactly how they assessed your property, what they felt you had in your house or didn't have in your house. And that's what's used as the basis for the assessment. Then you're given, the last time I was given an opportunity to come in or to call and to say, no, I didn't have this, because they didn't come in my house. So I wasn't home. So they didn't, they said I had sheet rock in my old house, but I didn't have sheet rock in my old house. It was like the old particle board walls. So I had an opportunity to tell them what I didn't feel was correct. And then we had a discussion and they adjusted it. And then from that adjustment, I was given my taxes. So is this pretty much the same process we're going to use this time?
Essentially, yes.
Thank you.
Well, they they're going to be doing, yes, they're going to be able to go and check every property record card for accuracy. So they will be going to homes, reviewing them. If they get invited in, they would they would be able to go in and and see that, but they don't necessarily have to be in.
Yes, sir.
Yes, good evening. I'm Stephen Cash. I'm a voting. I I can vote in in the Rundle. And I'm an actuary by profession. My professional training is all about fairness, professionalism and fairness. And it's it certainly seems like what's being the amendment up for proposal is all about fairness also. But just to put it in a practical sense, because I'm used to thinking about numbers. If if a house was fifteen years ago, twenty years ago valued at two hundred thousand, and now on average, that same house is valued at four hundred thousand. The next door neighbor's house may have been valued at two hundred thousand, but now its value, for whatever reason, is really two hundred and ten thousand instead of two hundred thousand. When 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 we have such a large amount of inflation in the housing market, where prices more than double over this period of time, it's a matter of fairness to kind of get it right and and proportion the the taxes accordingly. So I am in favor of the of the proposal.
Thank you. Okay, so the question's been moved and seconded. So all is in favor of ending discussion and voting on this? Let's see the yeses again. Sorry. Okay, opposed? Okay, so we're going to vote on Article twenty-three. All those in favor of Article twenty-three? Thank you, opposed? Okay, Article twenty-three passes as written. Article twenty-four shall the town vote to expend the sum of one hundred thousand dollars from municipal fund balance to purchase a five fifty type vehicle with appropriate plow gear for the Public Works Department. Select Board and Budget Board recommend yes. Any discussion on Article twenty-four? Yes, sir.
I thought we had, at one point, I thought we had set up a sinking fund to take care of capital expenditures. Is that where this money is coming from?
The money is coming from the fund balance that we presently have. We have another, we had another, we'll have another article looking to allocate tax funds for a capital equipment outlay. But in this particular case, we're asking to purchase this now and use fund balances to purchase it.
Have we not been setting money aside every year?
We've been setting money aside in our in our public works to take care of various items that we've leased purchased, as well as this year. We're going to also be asking for a a new bucket to our track hoe, a new body for one of our ten-wheel dump trucks, and that will come out of your capital expenditures.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on twenty-four? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, twenty-four passes as written. Article twenty-five shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of six hundred thousand dollars for road construction reserve account. Select Board and Budget Board recommend yes. Any discussion on Article twenty-five? Roads look fantastic. Okay. Any other discussion on twenty-five? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, Article twenty-five passes as written. Article twenty-six shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred fifty-two thousand two hundred seven dollars for the Public Works Capital Equipment Account. Select Board and Budget Board recommend yes. Any discussion on twenty-six? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, twenty-six passes as written. Article twenty-seven shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for the Arundel Fire Rescue Capital Reserve Account. Select Board and Budget Board recommend yes. Any discussion on twenty-seven? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Twenty-seven passes as written. Article twenty-eight shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars for the Recreation Department Capital Reserve Account. Select Board and Budget Board recommend yes. Any discussion on Article twenty-eight? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Thank you. Article twenty-eight passes as written. Article twenty-nine shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of nine thousand dollars for the Eastern Trail Account. Select Board and Budget Board recommend yes. Any discussion on Article twenty-nine? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, Article twenty-nine passes as written. Article thirty-four, not thirty-four, where did I look the page? Thirty. Yeah, exactly. Article thirty, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars for social service agencies? Select Board and Budget Board recommend yes. Any discussion on Article thirty? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Article thirty passes as written. Article thirty-one shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seventeen thousand dollars for the Kennebunk Free Library. Select Board and Budget Board recommend yes. Any discussion on Article thirty-one? All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, Article thirty-one passes as written. Article thirty-two shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand five hundred dollars for the Kennebunk Kennebunk Port, Arundel Chamber of Commerce. Select Board and Budget Board recommend yes. Any discussion on Article thirty-two? All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Article thirty-two passes as written. Article thirty-three, yes? Is there a second to that motion? There's two thirds vote. Is there a discussion on this? Yep.
Nilda Castner, and I had special interest in Article thirty-five, so I'm not really objecting to Diane's motion, but I would like some further input on Article thirty-five.
Okay, um, yes. We had there are there are money articles that we should vote separately, and there is another article further on that needs changes. So I would suggest that we not do this yet.
So again, the the motion on the floor is to take up, to consolidate these articles and take them up together. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, so that that's defeated. So we're going to continue on. Where am I? Thirty-three. So Article thirty-three shall the town vote to appropriate the sum of two million eight hundred twenty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars from estimated revenues to be used to reduce the tax commitment as follows. I'm I'm not going to read out these dollar amounts, but the Select Board and Budget Board recommend yes. Any discussion on Article thirty-three? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, Article thirty-three passes as written. Article thirty-four shall the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to expend up to five hundred thousand dollars from undesignated fund balance to be used when setting the municipal tax rate. Select Board and Budget Board recommend yes. Okay, any discussion on Article thirty-four? All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, Article thirty-four passes as written. Article thirty-five shall the town vote to encourage its elected federal lawmakers to enact strong national climate policy in the form of cash back carbon pricing, which would charge fossil fuel producers a carbon fee for every ton of CO2 pollution to be admitted by the burning of their products. Such fees to be collected into a national carbon trust fund and dispersed regularly to American households with equal per capita dividend checks with a record of the passage of this article to be sent by the town to the to Arundel's members of Congress, President of the United States, and the Governor of Maine within thirty days of the vote. Is there a motion? Second? Okay, discussion on thirty-five?
Todd Shea, Senate Road, I'm just curious where this is coming from. There's there's, oh, okay, all right, because typically, the Select Board doesn't initiate these types of things, so.
Yes, I'm David Rush, resident of Arundel. I proposed this article to the Ward. So basically, what it is, is it's similar to writing a letter to your lawmakers, but in this case, you're signing the town of Arundel at the end. It's sort of like you're you're expressing your support for a certain policy. If you didn't know, so Mainers, especially with the Senate, so every state gets two Senate, Maine Senate members, and Maine has a particularly low population. So each of our votes count more towards our senators than somebody in Florida or Texas or California. And additionally, both of our senators are sitting on the bipartisan Climate Caucus. So nobody, and this is kind of an interesting fact, nobody in the entire nation has more voice in future climate action than Mainers. So last year, last summer, I went down with a group of Mainers to Congress. We had like a lobby day, and I met with the office of Susan Collins. And one of the things that she said to us was, or it was her staffer, we met with the staffer, she had a meeting. One of the things, but what the staffer said was that they aren't hearing enough from Mainers that they're interested in these policies. So one way that we, so we've come back, and one way that we're amplifying our voices is by having towns all over the state pass these. Their one name for it is municipal resolves, saying, hey, Senator Collins, Senator King, Representative Golden, like, we would like you to support these specific policies when they come across your desk. I think twenty-eight towns to date, including Kennebunk, have already passed this. And right now, Bugrate is voting tonight, and we're voting on it tonight. The policy specifically that I outlined in here is cash back carbon pricing. So if you're not familiar with it, I think that last Congress, there were eleven iterations of this that went through. They were all a little bit different. The European Union passed one, the Canada passed one, and right now, I think in twenty twenty-five, there's or twenty thirty, there's these tariffs that are going into place against all nations that don't have one implemented. So it seems very likely that some version of this sort of carbon pricing is going to come to the United States. So what we're doing and and Citizens Climate Lobbyists, the group that I'm part of, is arguing for a particular version of this policy to go forth, so carbon cash back pricing. And the idea is, the only place that the tax is applied is at the actual producers of like fossil fuels. So if I'm a gas company, for every metric ton of carbon pollution that would be created by the gas that I take out of the ground, that tax is applied to me. So it's not applied to the citizen. And then what's key to this particular policy that makes it different from the others is that all of that money that's collected then goes back in a dividend check to American households. And so this was signed off on by twenty-five hundred economists, three chairs of the Federal Reserve. It's it's supposed to be the most fair and effective climate policy, and the reason is that money that goes back covers any cost increase that would come towards the gas or the natural gas or the oil or anything like that. The bottom two thirds of American income, or like the of Americans, the income spectrum, come out perfectly even. They don't lose any money at all. So that's all I have.
All right, great. Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, sir?
Until I'm going to make enemies, I'm opposed to it. I'm opposed to anything that is feel-good, that has no teeth and no substance to it. And this has no substance. We're just going to feel really good about the fact that we told Congress to do their job. They're not going to do their job. They're incapable of paying enough attention. I'm a I'm a, it's just a feel-good motion.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm an Arundel resident and registered voter. I'd rather drive five hundred miles on a tank of gas and then pull in and refill it in two minutes, then three hundred miles on a battery car, and then take three hours to recharge it. That's all.
Thanks.
Well, the cranky old man is up again. Emory Rounds from Arundel. This is simply, in my opinion, not the mission or business of this government body. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
All right. I like my town government. I can't stand my federal government. I don't like my state government, because every time they touch money, it never ends up going where it's supposed to go. We're making electric vehicles. Nobody wants to buy. We're not making gas. I'm sorry. I can't support this.
Yes, sir.
Todd Shea, Arundel, and suddenly I feel like we live in a fancy town. I'm nothing against this, Mr. Rush. I commend you for what you're doing. You're doing. I was a town manager for eight years. I ran an electric utility for eight years. Phil Labby and Wayne Perry, I'd like to know how many gallons of diesel fuel you guys burning here and what that's going to cost you on on the bottom line. Like I said, I'm not anti-environment, but this isn't for Arundel.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Craig Girth, I think it's a dangerous, we elect you to represent the town on town issues. Federal officials to represent there, and we should stay in our lanes and shouldn't be sending messages on our behalf of what we want at that level. and shouldn't be sending messages on our behalf of what we want at that level of government. So, thank you.
Thanks. Anything else on thirty-five? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to amplify something that Diane pointed out, which is, if there is a, an additional tax, totally unspecified, how much, who it applies to, it's simply going to get passed on to consumers the same way every other tax is. And so what we would have is friction in the system. Money getting collected at the start, and then there are various and sundry bureaucrats taking their little pieces of the crumbs from the pie as it goes along. And even if the citizens do get some cash back, we know that there will be inefficiencies. That's one objection I have to this. The second is that it is the, it simply isn't the business of the town of Arundel. This is similar in my mind to the city of Berkeley, California, having a foreign policy.
Thank you. Anything else?
I just want to say one thing. One thing is, David Rush, I just want to thank you, because that's really hard as an eighteen-year-old to stand up in front of a town. Second of all, I want to thank him because he did his homework. And I have friends in Canada that are getting eight-hundred-dollar checks from the government every single spring because of this exact, this exact law. And for anybody who thinks that us in town doesn't have anything to do with what's happening in the federal government is crazy. That is how this government is supposed to work. We are supposed to be, the government is supposed to be hearing from us. That is what we are. We are a representative democracy. So that is what it's supposed to be. And I would really love, I would really love for our young people to think that we have a little more faith in our elected officials that we talk to and that we send to our government to do the work on our behalf. So, thank you, David, and I'm for this.
Thank you. Any other comments on Article thirty-five? Okay, seeing none, we're going to put this to a vote. All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, I think the, the yeses have it, so Article thirty-five passes as written.
Ms. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion that we combine Articles thirty-six to forty-seven with a change of Article forty-four, which is a typo. It should state Article forty-three at the very end of Article forty-four.
There are, that's a motion to, so there's a motion to consolidate the remaining articles with a correction, including a correction to Article forty-four, where it references Article thirty-eight, but should reference Article forty-three. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay, the motion is seconded. Again, do we, hang on a second. Any, any discussion on the motion to consolidate and change the article? Okay, all those in favor of consolidating and making that correction to Article forty-four? Okay, opposed? Okay, so we'll do that. So now, well, you did make the motion to do that out of order, so let's just make the motion to it's, make a motion to approve it. Yep, yep. Okay, so a motion now is to approve Articles thirty-six through forty-seven with that correction to Article forty-four. Any discussion on approving these articles? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor of all of these articles? Thank you, opposed? Okay, Articles thirty-seven, thirty-six through forty-seven, with the correction to Article forty-four are adopted as written. Okay, that's the end of our business for tonight. I'd like to thank everyone for showing up and participating. I don't have anything else, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning? Thank you. We are adjourned at eight fifteen.